Welcome everyone. Sorry, I have to join this meeting by Zoom, so we will continue. This is the April 24th, 2023. Parks SS Park School District Autry Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is now 6:15 PM and this meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Erin, please conduct a board roll call.
Mr. Adams. Mr. Kushner. Mr. Davis. Mrs. Fareed.
Here.
Mrs. Kendall.
Moving on to approval of the agenda. Board members have an agenda before you. At this time, I'll take any comments or amendments to the current agenda. Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion in second to accept the current agenda?
I will be accepted.
We have a motion in second. Erin, please conduct a board roll call.
Mr. Adams. Mr. Kushner. Mr. Davis. Mrs. Fareed.
Aye.
Mrs. Kendall.
Ayes carry the vote and agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is public participation. We had no speakers sign up this evening. Agenda item two is our spotlight on success. Our middle school environmental resilience team with Mrs. Davis and our amazing middle schoolers. If you'd like to start.
Hi. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this project. This is Earth Force's Rice Challenge. And it's a statewide challenge to create a proposal that improves community resilience against central. The students create environmental sustainability story that is presented in front of a judge of panels, which are panel judges, and which will be next week. And the stories for child shot innovation, scope and research, stakeholder communication, budget, visuals, and overall community in front of the action. Last year, I say that we took first and on the competition, they focused on wildfires and wildfire mitigation work. And this year, they wanted to step up to try to be master. They certainly have entered into this. So we'll be presenting this as actual proposal video action story that will be judged. So. Lea, Maya, Amelia, Eva, and Sia. We have the three others that we. So just that.
Yeah. We are teaching this class to the public. They greatly want to change their environment to be better. Created the environment before, which didn't have ways of awareness for environmental issues. And had been creating a small community can provide your path. But when we access it, we are strong enough. And gave them a walk in the passion of being a living resource during the summer. So come this actually this goal out of us. While I was trying to force me to live in the land side, and make us fast moving. Of people more involved. As if for the fall, the world went within. And it's a special time. You have to be here. Something that can change in good drive back in the back of your head. It is a comparative finding, you know, all viruses protect the germ of the. We want to have a lot of things. They have been doing a lot. And where we want to come from. First, I suppose we want to work on being there. And that's important to me. Really, and. Followed by, yes. Using other projects, area of action. As we can have that community, such as issue, as they are looking to protect more use of it. Fire can be a big concern in my community, but also community number. This after wildfire is the hard part of the relationship with how we should have been committed. They could sound very probably the end of the world of the red carpet is getting. For me, for the red fire, it's something that all the things that stay in my spot, rather than just trying to get along. So that on a level, I mean, it's a lot of people. From often, I have to actually put you off of here. It was standing by my door with this. A private, private danger. There is a certain issue my daughter has. It's a common self, a private, private. I think that's great. And by using. For what's in our own. Chapter five of the building of wildfire, particularly construction. The children should be constructed with fire attire well with classes, composite attack blocks. For example, letting the people to be in trust, combined with ready to go. It has been critical that some cotton materials cost a new paper. The fire resistant material. It will also save more money to build with composite materials in the first place than to rebuild after time. The punishment amount, the content cost of these mountains, typically less than 50% of the whole. Music, the length and cost ratio really is four to one. Being a big four dollars for every one dollars spent on the mitigation of home fighting magic. We now achieve growth, our local funding, and the president's issue. Can't say, twenty state right now, currently amongst senior college students. Down by the water, she consistency, law of law. The couple still have access to address their unique challenges and recognize their ability. And rest of my sister. He introduced us to Santa Don. He was a Caesar. She gave us the idea of the simple. It's not sharing the wildfire is the only people work. The cell was just trained already since the concept of this option is okay. So it's a lot of guys doing people work. Besides, maybe I first proved outside of residence and stability. So also identify hazards in more than 2003. So we're going to do areas of air, which don't come to care. A little, and a little. It's a question of the area. They might think that does stand out easy for the best. Wildfires have consequences on the last few years, and we are spending development goals for new services. As a result, we are going to be going to be step over here far to. This year, in the morning, some organized space will be constructed with fire resistant materials. Fire resistant materials will play a part in slowing down wildfires. They also can affect the fire to the end. Also, if one of your family people be getting insurance on their homes to the wildfire. From the bar, we see the home to the local community. We almost can't cover the share short. We have very quickly as a community. I can remember on Monday morning, we were having a circular color. So we're sticking back with the knowledge of this project. To the object of that success for us. And it's not bogus for a factory by the project. We are the second year of the chair of the government and the stuff that they're trying to hide. So we just keep the one way. The access, satisfy the experience about people who do what it says. But we should have as many. But not much. There's a bunch of issues. So that's at least the only. Snap for transformer and plastic, it's where we like to see a lot. Want to observe a special area from beach damage. You know, this must be this calendar of that machine, right? To worry about some of the issues within. Pretty much our own weather, the fact that the investigation is. She also talks on the focus of this one, we are all conscious and our people. Giving enough. These areas should have been by the oil. For people's safety, they can also help that's pretty. Are any effects. And more importantly, it's going on the first. Putting the talk of the computers. Second, we have what land extension products and how we should always learn in part of the theme of Meadows and Boston. It's exciting to see this, that's a new experience. So next time we come visit our international fantasy castle area. My whole life, the usual review of the second one. So although it was very difficult in the past, I'm in the area. It's because of the reform, which is on the street. Issue non smaller, smaller, several of them. You know, as it's found, Lloyd, which should have suffered to on the 18th of January. But it's really needed comparing trees and charred voted with that. And I think which of one, every song, every system, the path and the rest of my life. All right, I'm eager to settle and act in. Make sure you got.
I've learned the only beauty thing about the. The presentation when sponsor following, I still have any information on which.
This is the time. They are very lost. That's why I was born with this meeting. On the last. He was for.
Really effective presentation. I first of all, the math's really helpful. I like the graphics. Thanks for that. I'm curious, here for me to you, like, you seem like you're about researchers. How was that impacted when you do count on the actual research?
Can we specifically, it helps change where you're seeing, seeing how we are wet and on a puppy that need to have more pants going there to help you to soar around, you can just always wear your shoes and really help me see like, here's.
Cool.
You know, my mom is the chief of research stewardship at the park. And she's talking about teachers and that is a lot. And that helps this experience helps me understand like what she's talking about to another level. My help, like I've heard people talk about them, like actually researching it and like going out to working. Issues like that actually helped me understand it more and see what the problems are.
Well. Um, I can't think of this. But yeah, very impressive. I know there's a lot of traction, straight up and down, but that makes sense. You go out with a lot of black water. And it would help me see how much she needs, how everything will do it.
Wow, thanks for doing that.
So before this project, I didn't even know what we go to. Um, for like the first week, I didn't even know, I didn't even remember what it's going for, like what it's good for. And I just learned what we go to and it's been a while.
I mean, you should do it more this.
Yeah. Feel like our team is like. Close and we can wait. Be entering the experience. Um, yeah, of like working together. We have grown closer and I think we will work together a lot better now.
So you needed funding for. Uh, there's YouTube clubs still.
I think so, and I talked about implementation funds, right? It's will get up to the last obvious age here or implementation plans. But because we have these so previous rice challenge parties, they use. The training, the stretch, and share.
Other board questions or comments?
Oh, oh, I think Stacy, I hear you from above. Bobby, thanks for like for providing this opportunity and good luck. Let's bring home another win for us at Park. Three years in a row, right? If we win this year.
Well, this last year was first, the first year.
Oh, okay.
So just an update, they are gonna go. There's bigger. I know part of the service. And so it's. Or so we're just waiting. To pay for waiting for extended house for. For the good features.
Well done. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item three, discussion items three, one, our student board rep reports.
Hello. Hi. All right, so this past month has been pretty eventful with all the testing and prom. And so I'm just gonna speak a little more depth about them. Um, prom was a huge success. The music was amazing and it was really good turnout. Lots of people ended up coming and very good feedback. Everyone really enjoyed it. And of course, we had the SAT testing and other various testing, not as enjoyed, but necessary and good. Uh, sports. I'm not into these sports. I can't speak on that very well, but I think the games are going really well. Um, we had a presentation for school shootings and what to do in that scenario. And I think it's really good to have those kind of presentations and to refresh on those things every once in a while, just in case something does happen. Um, I do think when we have those kind of things, we should enforce the fact that we have a good security system because I know we're proud of our security system, but I think it should be more like talked about because I know some kids do get stressed about those things. Um, we had a presentation before prom about being responsible with our decisions. And I really enjoyed the presentation and I know a lot of other kids did too. Because it was more realistic. It wasn't telling us what not to do. It was more like, um, telling us to be safe and make good decisions. And if we do end up having another one of those presentations, I think it would be helpful to talk more about sexual assault because it was really skimmed over and I didn't super appreciate that, but the rest of the presentation was fantastic. Good. Um. I've also heard requests for more orange chicken in the cafeteria. That's all I have for this month. It's, it's been a very good month. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any, uh, orange chicken always seems to be a favorite. Uh, any questions from board members? Nope. All right, moving on. Thank you. Um, agenda item three, two superintendent report superintendent Bodie.
All right, let's think. Um, well, gosh, this year went by really fast. I can't believe the day. Um, I am excited to share that we're gonna be transitioning to a different website called Final Site over the summer. We're gonna have a new webpage interface for our community and we're excited about this because of all the new possibilities that the site has. Final Site bought our previous provider and so we'll be transitioning over to that. And when we come back in the fall, you'll be seeing a whole new website design, which Erin Copeland and Anne Dewey have been working really hard on already and will continue to work on over the summer. It's quite a heavy lift for us and just big thank you to them for working on that. Last week was volunteer appreciation week. Thank you, thank you, thank you volunteers. We honored our volunteers by giving them a small gift. I wish we could have given them more because they deserve more. Um, but we just wanna thank everyone who's come into our schools. We had over eighty volunteers. I think we gave out eighty gifts, um, over eighty. And that's been really great because throughout the pandemic, we weren't able to have any of our regular volunteers in the school. So it's just been really, really great to have community members in our schools again, helping kids. Our strategic plan, you've seen the draft, but then at our work session, there's three focus areas, academic achievement and growth, authentic, real world learning and student staff wellness. And our core team of administrators will be gathering for three days in June to plan out the specific action steps for the next year under each of these focus areas. And we're really excited to engage in that work. Um, pending approval from the board in May on the strategic improvement plan. Um, there's gonna be a community conversation with the topic of mental health in RU in the middle school commons on Thursday, May 18, 5:30 to 7:30 PM. I just wanted to get that out there and invite everyone to attend. You're gonna be seeing some advertisements come soon. It's actually a partnership between Restorative Justice and the Essentium Library. So you'll be seeing communication on the library website and suppliers come out from the library. And they're partnering with our school district because there's been a lot of concern of many members of our community that many members of our community have shared regarding the mental health of our youth in our community. So we're gonna be engaging in a community conversation around this topic in our community together, led by Restorative Justice, leading those conversations. So students will need permission to attend and if they choose to participate, but everybody is welcome in our community to look for that. We have so many, so many celebrations to share. So the principals are gonna be sharing all of our celebrations in their reports. We just had so many students engaged in project based learning and getting out in the community on field trips. I'm just really proud of what teachers and principals have been accomplishing in their buildings with students and the level of learning that students are engaging in. Last week, this is the last week of testing. So this is the last week of students to make up their state testing if they were absent during the state testing the previous two weeks. And just wanna thank all our students for putting forth their best effort on the state assessment to show what they know and how they've grown in their academics. I'm happy to report full compliance and our accountability report for CDE on IDEA from the Colorado Department of Education. CDE has accepted all our federal IDEA funds and determined that we meet all the requirements that are reporting. And so we received a letter from the state a couple of weeks ago regarding that. We're working on planning ahead for our community and developing a three year look at the calendar. So looking at the calendar from 2024 all the way through 2027, we're asking our parents and community for input right now. In the fall, the calendar committee will gather and we'll be reviewing all that feedback and proposing several calendar options to the board to look at. And our hope is that we have a three year projected calendar to help families plan ahead so we can have students here every day for those 160 to 170 days that were in school. And so we'll be sending out this out several more times to our families and our community mailing list together. But we have loads of events happening in the next four weeks within our district as we wrap up the school year. We have Youth in Action Give Next Awards coming up this week. We have scholarship night coming up. Our community continues to be so generous to our graduating seniors, offering thousands of dollars to support them in their post secondary endeavors. We have several music concerts coming up, athletic events, elementary and middle school dances. Secret of my own celebration in the town, which the school district is one of the sponsors. The Rotary Duck Race on the sixth of May, which tons of our clubs and activities are involved with and do a lot of fundraising crew. Um, the girls in the run 5K is also on that break day. So the girls will run at the elementary school hosting their first 5K. We have 10th grade promotion, eighth grade promotion, night at the museum of the elementary school, bachelor laureate, and of course, high school graduation, all coming out within the next four weeks. So we're gonna be busy at the school district. And then, of course, is our end of the year teacher reception, where we honor our teachers for the many, many accomplishments that they've had over the years. We've not been able to have this reception over the last three years. The last time we had it was 2019. So we're really excited and I'm looking very forward to celebrating with staff. I also have Nolan's athletic report updates. I'm just gonna go ahead and do that now. And it's a little out of order and then we'll get to the rest of the report. So as far as our athletics update go, we have a lot of celebrations here as well. Baseball is now seven to three on the season and they're ranked 15th in the state. Um, yeah, that's the big deal. The top thirty two teams make it to the playoffs. Mikey Bird leads the team in offense with a point seven oh six batting average and a point seven two two on the base percentage, two home runs and sixteen stolen bases. Mike McCown leads the team in pitching with a point seven ERA and the team has a tough upcoming stretch with number thirteen Dawson tomorrow, number twenty seven Matchbook on Thursday, and number twenty six Front Range Christian on Saturday. Lots of games coming up for the baseball team. Boys Swimming and Diving will wrap up their regular season this week with a duel meet tomorrow against Valley and a try meet on Wednesday with Silver Creek and Longmont. Um, tomorrow is senior night for our lone senior Riley Walker on the swim diving team. Congratulations, Riley. The meet will start at 4:30 PM. The northern, the northern league meet will be May fifth and sixth at Epic in Fort Collins. We're really proud of how hard the team has worked this season and hope to build on this for next year. Girls soccer is now three and six on the season and ranked number twenty eight in the state. The top sixteen teams make it to playoffs. Stacey Morgan leads the team offensively with seven goals and fifteen points. Chloe Smith leads the team with seventy nine saves as a goalkeeper. Chloe Coon leads the team with really great defensive leadership and speed in the back. That's why Chloe couldn't be here tonight. She was the other board rep that was supposed to be here, but she had a game. And then this Thursday, senior night for Andrea, Garcia, Stacey Morgan, Chloe Smith, Isabella, Hupnum, Stelo, Estelo, and Natalie Shray. A lot of seniors on that girls soccer team. Congratulations to them. The match will start at 4:00 PM against the Battle. Track and Bill is having a great season. On Saturday, they competed in the Broncos, Stanford, Eden Cursey with twenty one other schools and they had great finishes. Austin Teix was second place in a 400 meter run and reached shots to third place. Austin Teix took first place in the 800 meter. Mason Windel was first place in the 1600 meter and second in the 3200 meter. The four by four meter relay got third place. That was for the boys. For the girls, Brittany Vex was tenth place in the 800 meter and sixth place in the 1600 meter. The four by eight relay was third place. The next week is this Friday and Saturday at Liberty Bell Invite in Littleton. Patriot League meet is May fourth and sixth. We expect to have some chance, some chance of state qualifiers after that meet. In middle school, the girls soccer is now one of four this season. Their win was overwhelmed Central and they also played a close one, four left it, four to three. Today, we hope to finish the regular season with a win at Lincoln. The end of the season tournament is next week. The team has been led by, led by great play from Emmy Anderson and Haley Down. Track and Bill is having a great season. Here are some good finishes from their meet last Thursday. Andros was sixth place in the 200 meter. Dino was fifth place in the 400 and Jed was sixth place. Caleb was second place in the 800. Caleb was first in the 1600 and Dino was second place in the 1500. In the high jump, Ben Smith was fifth place and in the triple jump, second place. And then Andros also took seventh in the shot put. And the girls lead in the third place in the 400 meter. Shaylee was eighth place in the 800 meter. Natalie was sixth place in the 1600 meter. Uh, Clara was sixth in the long jump and Kyle was second in the discus. We will host the conference meet on Wednesday at four. The final meet of the season will be the league meet on Wednesday, May third. At even the left, even we'll wrap up. Only on Wednesday. All right. That's it for us. Thank you to Nolan for providing that.
Is there any board member questions? Great, thanks for the report Superintendent Bodie. Moving on to agenda item three, three, Brian. Great. Thanks for the report Superintendent Bodie. Moving on to agenda item three-three, Brian Lynn, third quarter financials.
Regarding the financials, we have a quick update on budget. Still working through timing gifts, renewals for all of our insurance on our loan loss and borrowing with reliability insurance. Big thing there is trying to get our asset value up to replacement costs. I've been talking to other CFOs that have recently completed random buildings. They're not even up to current rates. They have to increase their charitable values, probably the buildings that were completed within the last few years because they're fifteen percent behind. So we're in that game as well, trying to get caught up on that. So we're working through those proposals. Our health insurance is in final review right now. Saying there is, we are running very high on utilization and our insurance company is looking to lose about forty percent of our plan this year. So we're with four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars off our insurance plan. So we are working hard to try to not get a huge renewal on that. Those are the big things out there. We're also working through, looking at trying to increase all of our payables. And right now, we have two thousand dollar increase to survive and looking to carry go three thousand dollars, increase to forty-five thousand. We're also working through and should have support for pay analysis. We're looking to do a five percent increase of support or base on that. And then also looking at Then the last thing, we are waiting for SFA's school fund tax to be approved. Supposedly according to CASB, that should be this week, but I'm not fully addressed. The state sent out a run saying this is what it's going to look like and then three days later they've edited it with a formula. So there's still kind of up in the air of what it's actually going to look like for funding for next year. One of them likely is going to be a similar formula. They might want to take down some of the factors of the and the first run. First run, we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar increase compared to the current year and then went back to the old formula, we're looking at a four hundred thousand dollar increase. So we're still working through, just like everybody else in state on MTK because the state's always figured that out. They kind of got on that one. So we're still trying to figure that out. So that's kind of where we are financially. You guys have any questions on that? And then she left. The orange chicken, that's our first gift. It's a big commodity across the state. So the big business, there's a little bit more of it being worked with. So there's the answer to that. So as you can see, we're seventy-five percent the way through the year. We did start to receive proper tax collections. Our first big way in March, which allowed us to pay out three point four million cash that we did have to borrow from the state and also small program to cover payroll and operating expenses starting in November through February. So that's kind of where we are. Reimined we'll have another big influx of cash coming in in May and then also be a few payments in June as well to get us close to that hundred percent. And then there's some carryover that we got to figure for July and August distributions we did brought back and are here. Operational, you can see elementary school is about seventy percent. All the buildings are about seventy percent. Options just a little higher just because we've had a lot more going on in the staff. Salary expenses compared to what we had budgeted, but that's just due to the English program and things like that. So it's not a huge dollar amount, but percentage wise it's, it looks big, but instead of dollar amount, just because of one of the O E program. Get that coverage still. So we're running about seventy percent this reply and that's usual because we have that one month of rule for all our staff for their pay July. So operational, we're right in line with where we should be. Some other things that have gone on, so capital, we did purchase a new TMC Yukon. We have three Suburbans that are mid nineties that we were trying to phase out. And then we're also looking to respond to things like that over the doors on the lower half elementary school to help with some expansion and contraction issues we have with those doors that cause issues with being able to open both of them. And we got quotes on that and we actually did that quote last week. So that's in the works. We also received a quote to finish the lighting upgrade in the outer plane. Obviously, no, we did do the fixtures themselves. And now we're back in technology side of it and was able to support it. Now it's at the end of its useful life. So we did get a quote to get that updated. So then everything is all operational. We don't have like wholesome issues and things like that that can do light during our spring performance. But everything else in the packet is straightforward, check run or checklist thing. So any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item three-four administrative reports, Erin Miller.
You just got me to my needs. John is supporting this fun event. So senses for cars and always sharing on the faculty. Elementary school. So one of the things I want to share, Ruby, just want to share that there's a lot, a lot of celebrating and in the realm of high impact instruction last week and over the next two weeks, there's just a lot of celebrating, celebrations of learning. Elementary school. Last Friday, both the preschool and the first grade classes had their celebrations of learnings for their big project-based learning. They've been studying, the preschoolers were studying about building and the first graders, their big design project around shoes and the animal adaptations. And they were both huge success and we had overwhelming number of parents for both events. And hopefully you've all seen the PBS feature that came out last week on the first graders and their hard work. And I just can't say enough of how proud I am of our first grade students and the learning and teachers for their amazing for such an impactful learning experience for our students. And then next week, our kindergarten is wrapping up there. They've been studying bees and plants and how specifically the plants in Estes Park support our views. Why and so forth. And they'll be having a celebration of learning next Wednesday night. The families will be coming to attend. And then the following week, the third grade is finishing up their Estes Park history video. You know, we're actually going to have a night at the museum with their exhibits with photographs of before and after, a history of Estes Park. And so the kids are being really excited about their career and she cannot stop talking about Estes Park history. I have learned a lot and it's great to see how excited they are and much they want to share about it. So so just big exciting ways for them to really feel like they're audience, that they have an authentic audience for their learning. And we're really seeing that engagement because of it. And then everything in high impact instruction that we've been working on, I've shared about our PD days throughout the year, we've been working on high impact instruction and writing and spent time in each of our PD days making standards-based rubrics and collaborating on what the expectation is and having collected that to see about what is quality writing at each grade level and how, what strategies to be used to support that. And it's been exciting to see since our February sixth PD day, all the primary classrooms have been really working on exemplars for students to see visuals and supports and resources to help students be in the writers. A lot of these strategies are having a huge impact on our writers as well as having authentic, purposeful reasons for their writing, whether it's school people are creating things for these PBL projects. And next week, we'll be having our leadership team has worked to design a school-wide writing assessment. So we'll be having our end of year writing assessment, three K through fifth grade and then doing a school-wide student work protocol, looking at that two weeks. Then Karen sending that forward to her next year teacher to support their continued portfolio of writing. So we're really excited about that work and the student wrote writing this year. The other piece around, around how that high impact instruction is that we're lucky enough to have the rise ramp again for the next two years. And we have a fabulous team of educators that are excited to really have the mission of project launch inspiring our students. And it's like getting this ready for next year in fun, exciting ways and bringing our passions into it. And so we have fifty-eight students currently enrolled and we're very excited about our program. And then our culture and collective advocacy and our community, we have our very first, our PSCL has a family dance planned for Friday night. So come and join us on the, in the gym dancing and there'll be some fun treats for sale and neon glow things to have a good time all together. If you might have gotten one today, that pie is in the face of the principal. So we'll just have to come and find out whether that's going to happen or not. And then we also have, Ruby mentioned the podcast on the run that is coming up next or May sixth on Saturday. We also have a lot of music performances with this school year. So kindergarten is coming up on Wednesday and then fifth grade, we just have fourth grade makeup for the next week. So a great job seeing the music for our students. And the other exciting, we have fifth grade camp coming up next week and they're doing their overnight camp out to Allen's Park and Hades Camp. And then the whole, the whole third through fifth grade is going to be going on a celebratory field trip down to the Denver Museum of the Future and Science. Down on the essential to celebrate all the heart of this year and the C N S. Your testing. So excited for them. And then we have our last PSCL meeting will be Thursday, May fifth. Final books of the year will be May twelfth. I'm taking the feedback I received at one of our mid-year books and breakfast as we're starting our mid-year assessment or end of year assessments next year, next week. Making low QR codes, which is information about what each assessment is, what the assessment information for parents means to them to go home with parents when the assessment in the next month. And so looking forward to having that ready to send home to families. And then we have roundup on Monday. So it's kind of run around the time. My grandpa purple flannel shirt arrived today. So I'm ready now. We have fifty-seven students already enrolled for roundup next year. Typically, we get ten to fifteen students throughout the summer enrolling and so that puts us estimating in class seventy to seventy-five, which is unharmed the last few years approximately. But still trying to get the word out to make sure it's possible there. And then we're also planning preschool launch, similar to roundup to get families in and registered and forward and meet the teachers on May fifteenth. And so looking forward to sending out letters to our families later this week and welcoming them to our our class of thirty, thirty-second. So starting out their academic career a while. So that's the report from elementary school.
Thank you. Any more questions? Hey Erin. I, I just wanted to say the video, the PBS video of our first grade learning was absolutely wonderful. And thank you to everyone that was involved in that. You could see the excitement of learning in the first graders faces. So I really appreciate everybody's time and effort they put into that.
Awesome. Thank you so much for the feedback. It was a lot of work and it was well worth all of it. The kids really learned a lot. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Next up is Sonia Greenway.
There it is. So after, after our environmental resilience, I feel sort of second fiddle, but they are amazing. Yeah, we are celebrating, almost being done with C M S testing. That's our first big celebration. I think we have a few makeups to finish, but that is just about over. So I will definitely be celebrating that personally. And I think our students, our father, to be we did finish the panorama surveys. And I'll share that data when we receive it. I don't know the date when we get our panorama results, but I'm really excited to see where we fall this year. And we are continuing fundraising efforts for the mouse school sign. Coming up this Thursday, we have our art show and fundraiser. We are still looking for some dessert. So whoever is listening, we can choose a few more for our dessert auction, but I have some parents working hard on that too. And we'll have open like poetry. Students have been doing some poetry slash art projects that we're going to share and hopefully some of them will be brave enough to get up to the microphone. And then you'll be able to see some amazing student artwork. Ms. Rashi and her students are busy for that. It's been a while since we've had an art show. I'm really excited about the new website. Work is, is moving forward with that and it's just looking so good and I can't wait to have that up there. We've been working on our own kind of middle school parent toolkit website. So we're prepared to just transfer information right into the new one. So I'm excited about that. We're still working on student engagement and making plans to continue that push for engagement and improving attendance next year as well. So our next few it's not very many staff PLCs left, but we're starting to talk about next year and where we want to go. Appreciate it. Ruby coming in and talking about strategic advantage today. I think that was really valuable. We're still losing a lot of convo to contact parents. I think that's still successful and also working on having those conversations about being even more effective with communicating with parents and asking parents, what do you want to hear from from teachers at the middle school and how can we improve that? So we'll continue that as well. As far as high impact instruction, the depth and complexity is in place and working, working really well. I'm really thrilled about the conversations that are happening and the critical thing being that occurs when kids have that great work to discuss their learning. Our ELA curriculum adoption is well underway. I think they're going to get narrowed down so that we'll bring parents in to see what, what parents and community think about the choices when they get it narrowed down to do. But it's looking really good and I think the team has a good handle on, on what they want. We're having lots of conversations about standards-based teaching and learning with our staff during PLCs. They're really looking at what that looks like in the classroom, what that instruction looks like in the classroom and how we can be clear and transparent about student learning and progress on those standards. Another celebration, they did receive a grant from the Village Thrift Store to complete our purchase of a sensory T-wall, which is an Xergaming wall that we're going to use in our ELC and it's portable. So we have some plans to use it with our special. Let students will be moving it around the building. Yeah. So I have to place a big order tomorrow and get that, get that going. So we have it installed and we're trained before the end of the year. So big thank you to, to the Village Thrift Store. The rest of the grant came from E B F and thanks to Ben Buckman for helping me get all that going. So very exciting about that. And if you don't know what a T-wall is, I had to do some learning too, but it's, it's a sensory wall and it involves kids finding patterns. It's really great for getting parts of the brain activated that need to be. And also when we do have those kids that get really trapped in the amygdala and need to refocus, that sensory wall is going to be a great tool for us to use for those students. We have completed registration for next year's classes. I was able to go visit the fifth grade classes and talk to them a little bit about middle school and use depth and complexity to do it. So that was pretty cool. They all knew what it was. So that was really exciting too. They all know our common signals now. So we'll be able to say, hey, sixth grade and they'll all say, hey, what? So that's nice. And they know our gimme five signal for attention. So that's nice. And they know our gimme five signal for attention and we practice that. Um, they'll be coming up to middle school in May to do a step up day, meet the teachers, see the classrooms, and we'll have some um, student ambassadors to take them around. It'll be a fun day too. We'll be finishing touches on next year's schedule, not my forte, so thanks to everyone who's helped me with that. I think we're getting close. It is the assessment season, so we will be doing our final testing um, starting the week of May. And I think all our students know where they are, where they need to go. We have our collective goal. We are close to getting where that goal, where we set that goal to be, so I'm really excited to see if we make it. We're pretty close. I looked at some data last night just to crunch those numbers one more time and I'm pretty confident we'll make it. And the team, um, we will be having a, a big celebration on Wednesday at the middle school, but I can't share what it's about yet. You'll just have to stop and see, but it's a, it's a really cool thing. Yeah, it's a secret, but it's gonna be great. Thanks, I do about it. Um, I think that's it for my report. Any other questions?
Sonia, when do we find out about this specific thing? I agree, it's a couple of birthdays by then.
You know, the one or two meetings. Or Friday, my name's Leonard. Or watch the news. Or watch the news.
Thank you Sonia. Mary Baron, Monica Sins?
Right, so for us about high school, A P testing begins Monday, this coming Monday and goes to Wednesday, May the tenth. Students and teachers have been really preparing hard for these tests and they will take place at the community center in our schedule and during, during that timeframe. So we wish all the luck to all of those students who have been preparing really hard for these tests. Um, last week myself and a few other staff members had the opportunity to visit Williams Smith High School in Aurora. If you don't know, this is an experiential learning school. It was a really great conversation that we were able to have with the principal there, um, a group of students, a student panel. And we got to the classrooms. It's a really, uh, it's a really great school with, uh, they're doing full project based learning, so we came away with some great ideas and thoughts about how we're gonna continue to do it for with our P V L journey at the high school and we're excited about that. As Ruby mentioned, our local scholarship night is coming up on May eleventh at, at our high school. For seniors who will receive local scholarships and we are so thankful to our community for that, um, for those wonderful funds that they provide. Um, last week on Wednesday, April nineteenth, a group of our students were invited to attend the climate summit at C S U. Um, that summit was organized by students for high school students in the Northern Colorado region. Was a call, it's a collaboration between C S U School of Global Environmental Sustainability and Pudar School District's Career Innovation Department. Thanks to our Alex Harris for providing the opportunity for our students. They had a great time and learned a lot. On the fourteenth of April, one of our seniors, Lilian Smith, had the honor of speaking at the annual state director of special education conference in Denver. She and two middle school students actually spoke and were the first students to speak there in the history of this conference, so we're really proud of all of them. Um, they've already been invited to speak at another conference coming up in June. And um, it's pretty cool that they're willing to share their stories and their experiences, so we were proud and they, they got a lot out of that themselves. You've heard that our English department is in the process of adopting mid curriculum. We're excited about that. They've been working hard with our partner Williams as well to help us in that adoption. We're getting closer to looking at narrowing, narrowing this down um, to finalists and then we'll be inviting our parent community and to take a look at those as well in the near future. Um, our culture and climate, as Milo said, prom went really well. It's exciting to think about because um, you know, you always worry a little bit about prom and everything that can happen, but man, our students were they were safe, responsible and just had a great time. We all had a great time. I want to thank Autumn Zale for being there the whole time with us as well, providing that extra piece of of safety and just he's such a great connection for our kids and it was great. I want to thank John Santana and Ellie Hansen, who are our seniors sponsors, and the kids couldn't say enough about how much fun they had. We were tired. It was also mentioned that this Wednesday, our international give access to spark awards will happen at the high school from six to seven thirty. Um, it's pretty exciting. I think just for a little background, the, the students are provided with five thousand dollars to start that and then they raise a thousand on their own. And then they're matched by our new rotary and they come to a total of about seven thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars that are available to give back. And there are four groups and I'm not giving anything away because they've already been notified, but it's Saba, which is the sexual assault victims advocates, Isaac, which is the Intervate Solidarity and Accompaniment Coalition of Northern Colorado, Child Save Colorado, and then the Ask Spark World Place. Each of those recipients will receive eighteen hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents, so very cool. Completely student run, they review these, they make the, the decisions and it's a really cool way to give back to our community who does so much for us, so that's exciting. Um, and then our high school are, is gonna be having a showcase event on Thursday, May twenty third, so that last week of school from two thirty to five thirty, so many of our classrooms and students will be showcasing their hard work this semester. Um, it'll take place um, in our C T building and outside of the building and then inside of our um, auditorium hallway and in our commons if needed. We're really excited about that because we get a lot of fun last year and we'll get to showcase some great stuff. Um, I've been invited to attend the last two superintendent council lunches with our students and with Ruby to discuss our dress code. So I've gotten some great inputs, some of the students, and we looked at data. And I'll be providing my own feedback to, to you all as well um, to talk more about that and my thoughts on that topic as well, and I want to thank them for inviting me to that. Um, and I also want to thank our wonderful volunteers, like Ruby said, we have, we have people coming in almost every day and they have made a big difference and we really appreciate them a lot. They, they're great people. Um, and then uh, communication, parent teacher conferences were scheduled for March twenty second, but due to the snow day, they got rescheduled for April fifth. We had a really good turnout. We felt good about the, that turnout for conferences. And the same night right afterward, we held our final meeting for parents of seniors to discuss the week of graduation planning. Lots of great plans, lots of great um, parents who are coming forward to help with that. So we have all kinds of things happening, our picnic for seniors and their families, which is gonna be a cool event. On the eighteenth, senior clapout, the twenty second, that award is being held um, with the Y M C A. Um, the twenty fourth, senior breakfast on the twenty fifth. And then of course, graduation, and that will be at the Dunraven, then graduation practice that Thursday and Friday. Um, Friday, May twenty sixth, eleven o'clock is our actual ceremony and it will be at the Bobcat Field. Um, if the weather doesn't cooperate, we will have it at the event center and I'm gonna be sending out a final confirmation on that on the twenty fourth, the morning of the twenty fourth, so everybody is aware. And then finally, attendance and student engagement, our eleven graders, myself and Kristen Hill, which is one of our wonderful parents in our community that has helped us with um, parking spots. As you've seen, our seniors, they enjoy that this year. So we met with our eleven graders that will be seniors and they're pretty excited for their turn on this, so. So um, they'll, they're kind of in the planning phase, the kids are getting their, their ideas, they're gonna have to turn them in next week. And then um, in August, before school starts, it gets, it gets paint, so we're excited. Um, our excellent jazz band traveled briefly last week to play and hear critiques of their music in front of some master musicians. It was a great opportunity to invite our wonderful band director, Caitlin Brennan, off her Colorado game recently. It was a huge hit with our students. It was awesome. They performed for us, the league of April fourteenth, what a great group of performers who sat and talked to our students afterwards, answered questions, shared their experiences about their how their lives come into what they have and it was, it was really cool. Um, and then this right, our class two of our classes are deep in the process of painting murals and our girls are more lack of them now. So I'll let you know when those are done. They're looking great, so you can come and take a peek at those and they're really neat. And finally, we are also um, I've sent out attendance letters to our students and families where our absences have been excessive, whether excused or not, because we want to talk about that connection with our school, how important that is. And um, I've heard some feedback on the parents. We're, we're appreciating that. We're continuing to have those conversations um, and provide support to those who are struggling. And then the sins. Feeling really bad about myself. My, your font size and mine's like, I'm reading my books. So uh, last meeting, we had talked about uh, boys and girls state and I have some students to announce for you. The American Legion Post one nineteen has invited seven students to attend Girls and Boys State. There are five girls that have been asked and two boys. This program invites students from over, all over Colorado to represent their schools in a government in action learning program that encourages high school juniors to become empowered and knowledgeable leaders. At this time, Kenneth Cromer, Oliver Atopia and Kimberly Bernal have committed to going to represent us at Park High School and we are grateful for Post one nineteen and Scott Manning for sponsoring our students. This is really an neat opportunity and I, I was super excited just, and it was kind of funny, the kids like to be on the restaurant about where you're sending us. And, and I started explaining and then Scott Manning came and talked to the students and they got a little more excited. And so the more they learned about what it was, what it would do for them, what it would mean for them, uh, it was, they wanted all work, so I was super excited. Uh, one thing we have, we're nine students from completing testing and that will happen tomorrow. I'm with Sonia on that one. We will celebrate together. With Debbie Compton's help, uh, we have completed the reporting for C D I, which is Career Development Incentive Program, which is a reimbursement for funds for industry certifications for our students. We have completed I law, which is Innovative Learning Opportunities Pilot Program. It allows students to continue to be full time and while doing internships and programs through um, our meter program or workplace learning. And we have completed our C T A, which is the Career of Colorado Career and Technical Act. This act is our collective for teacher credentials, program assurance, assurances and reporting for funding. Our C T or C T E programs are based on the requirements of the state of Colorado. Each program is developed to accommodate student needs and student wants. And we have, we're uh, maybe some good changes for our program and we're hoping to add more for next year. And that would increase funding from the state also, that will help us pay for all the things that we're wanting to do for students. Uh, one of the things that we've talked about several times is the Perkins Funding. Uh, Perkins Funding is a grant that our teachers can write for equipment, supplies and curriculum. This year we had five grants written. Our teachers asked for equipment that would replace old, but old equipment and some amazing new equipment, which you really need to come see. We asked for more curriculum in health sciences programs and our agriculture and construction programs have teamed up to bring in more equipment for mechanics and construction. So I made a list of the, from Perkins Funding, all the things that we got. We, through the five grants, we covered four different areas, which was agriculture, construction, the health sciences and culinary. For agriculture, we got a stand blaster, plasma cutter, plasma cutter, cutting table, metal pot, bender, sheet metal brake, sheet metal, oh, sorry, wrong, metal working bandsaw, metal hand punch, a drill press, metal and wood bandsaw, bench and disc sander. That was all for agriculture and agriculture. For construction, we got a stationary planer, we had, and joiner. It's a, a two for one kind of deal. And we've got the measuring tapes of the things that disappear, so um, Ms. Davis wanted to replace the measuring tape. So we now have numbered and inventoried measuring tapes. For health scientists and sciences, we have an A D T trainer, C P R dummies that are babies. We have the bag valve mask ventilation trainer for adults and infants. We have basic life support books that will be used for our training for C P R. We have period cancerous, cancerous and lesion hinge disc test, which allows the students to identify one or the other. And the geriatric skin condition simulation kit. Thought that was pretty interesting. I haven't seen that one yet, but I don't know if COVID grows out or not. And in culinary, we have ordered and replaced a broken freezer and it was, it's a restaurant quality freezer. So we get some free stuff. Um, next year we will be offering a professional development opportunities for every teacher in the C T E program. This funding will come from the Perkins Grants. Our teachers are growing the programs and I want to make sure that they have the opportunity, opportunity to create new and amazing programs, projects and skill sets. And I look forward to next year. There is so many ideas that have come out, so many emails back and forth and a lot of camaraderie between the groups of help we help and, and they've done a great job.
Great, thank you. Moving on to agenda item three, five, board reports, Mr. Adams. Jason?
All right, I do have one. Uh, I went to middle school accountability committee, it was a really good discussion about revising grading practices. And this is not until, not next year, but the following year, but we're looking to the future. And so as Sonia said, they talked about standards based grading. And they also talked about like what grading, they want grading that's mathematically correct. They want a grade on learning, not on behavior, and the teachers are really focusing on doing quality assessing. So it's a good discussion of just starting. There's a good chance to be more on that. And also I want to give a huge shout out to Sonia for all the work around testing, because we've had a person counselor, she has done a lot of it, so it's been a lot of work, wow. So huge shout out to her, that's all I have.
Thank you, John?
Yes, the boss is met twice in April. First time was a legal presentation by Catherine Prince. The topics included open record laws and executive sanctions, pending legislation, dealing with school violence. And then towards dealing with complaints about folks. There'll be more coming than that. And then last week, we had a regular meeting, which was mostly administrative, issuing some public adjustments.
Thank you, Ava?
Um, yes, I attended the elementary school accountability, accountability committee. Um, it was discussed uh, class placement. I can sleep. Um, I'm sorry. Class placement procedures for this next school year. Uh, the parents have received that information. Uh, project based learning goals for next school year. They're wanting to see one to two um, projects for grade level, integrating science and our social studies with language arts and math. And then they'll do a celebration of learning with each grade level. And then this uh, special schedule was discussed for next year. For the teacher evaluation committee, we're excited about the work that we did during this meeting. A lot of fine tuning and collaboration has occurred. Um, we developed a comprehensive packet for teachers around the evaluation process. Committee updated the timeline, professional learning goal expectations and measures of student learning to align with the new Senate Bill seventy guidelines. And I want to thank Carmen for all the work that she's done during this whole process.
Thank you, and I attended two meetings over the month. One was the district accountability where we uh, received a presentation on the E L D programming in the district. And Courtney uh, came in and spoke to us about the district wellness. I also attended a president's board cafe with Casby. They talked about the school finance, um, coming out of the legislators. Um, and then they spoke a little bit about the upcoming elections for the school districts. And they are sending out material um, regarding the election. So moving on to agenda item four, consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda tonight. Approval of the twenty twenty three meeting minutes, approval of the April twenty twenty three personnel list, E L eight asset protection and E L nine school safety. Are there any items a board member would like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the approval of the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to be approved in the simple agenda.
All second?
We have a motion and a second. Erin, can you please conduct a board roll call?
Mr. Yes, oh, excuse me.
Mister, oh, excuse me, Mister Adams?
Aye.
Mister Kushner?
Aye.
Mister Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Fareed?
Aye.
Mrs. Kendall?
Aye.
I secured a vote and the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item five, action items. We have no action items this evening. Moving on to agenda item six, upcoming meetings. We have a May ninth work session, eight thirty at the admin building and a May twenty-second regular meeting, six fifteen. Moving on to agenda item seven, a German, would a board member make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second? Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned for the evening.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.